As soon as I turned on the recording, you guys got real quiet.
Yeah, didn't even pay to start it. You're not recording anything.
Just watching the clock.
Well, you said watch what you say. I'm recording, though.
Someone's time indicates that we're coming up on the 7 o'clock hour. We may have to mute somebody there.
You don't like my clock?
I do like your clock. Good evening. Welcome to the regular Board of Education meeting. Attending a virtual meeting may be a new experience for some, so please allow me to take a moment to review some procedures that will allow everyone to participate. When speaking this evening, please state your name, address, and topic before beginning your comments. Some meeting participants are joining by telephone and cannot see the face or the name of the speaker as shown on a computer screen. The public participation in the board meeting follows by law 0167.3, and that applies to this virtual meeting as well. Please mute your phone or computer microphone to prevent feedback and background noise during times when you are not speaking. There is a chat box in the upper right-hand corner of your screen. The chat box may be used to pose a question. The name or telephone number of the person posting the chat comment will appear on the screen. The board president will read the question aloud during the appropriate section of the meeting for the guests calling in by telephone. This particular meeting has an opportunity for public comment under item number 10 on the agenda. If you would like to register to make comments during this meeting, please type your name, address, and topic in the chat box at this time. All Board of Education votes will be conducted through a roll call vote. The meeting is being recorded, and the recording does include any items typed into the chat box. President Johnson?
Thank you, Dr. Oppert. You'll come to order. The Manual of Education exists to lead and serve to support the education of all students focused on developing policies, retaining highly effective staff from the community, and ensuring the sustainability of the district through open and clear communication. Please rise to the allegiance on your screen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the Kansas City Public Health Association, and to the Republican Party, and to the one vision, one purpose, one principle, with religion and justice as our goal. Petke, if you can call the roll, please.
Mr. Schaller?
Here.
Mr. Forbes?
Here.
Mr. Holman?
Here.
Here.
Mrs. Petke here. Mr. Johnson?
Here, Parkman.
Mrs. Johnson? Here. Dr. Oppert, can you verify publication of meeting?
Yes, it was.
Great, thank you. We would have the annual ad hoc committee appointments, first being the Ad Hoc Human Growth and Development Committee, and I apologize, I do not have the full packet. Thank you, Dr. Oppert.
You're welcome.
Chair of that committee is going to be Bobby Joe Petke. The administrator serving is going to be Danny Brower. Staff attending on there is going to be Cory Zemmer, Janine Connolly, Luann Yuzandowski, Kevin Murphy. Community members will be Nathan Reickley, Steve Rice, Dr. Geddes, Paula Kresel, Stephanie Riske, Lincoln O'Brien, Brittany Reasonberg, and students are Emma Riske and Colin Mosher. We also need to name the Ad Hoc Recognition Committee members as well. Bobby Joe Petke is chair of that committee. Joanne Johnson, myself, is on that committee. We have Carmen O'Brien, Tracy Conkle, Melissa Lobianco, and Mariah Wright. Presentations. Make key performance indicators safety drills, sprint holes, please.
Who would like to start?
Michelle, you can go first if you'd like. I'm having trouble hearing her. Can anyone else hear her?
I don't think so. I didn't check.
I'm having trouble hearing anybody.
Her volume is on, but I wasn't hearing anything either.
All right.
What about the mic? Is the mic on?
Yeah, she's working on her mic right now.
Well, Dan, if you wouldn't mind going first, then we'll give Michelle an opportunity to see if she can get her microphone operating.
Absolutely.
Or she could telephone you as a backup.
Okay. Well, everybody, I'm wearing a hat tonight because the hair is out of control, so. All right, I can tell you that our security and safety drills, we, for the short amount of time that we were in session, we actually had a lot of activity to practice drills. As I review the sheets that we do our login, obviously, the first day of school, we always do our every lockdown available. We do the tornado drill, we do the evacuation drills, we do a shooter drill, fire drill, we take care of our malls. Those were logged. Shortly thereafter, in the month of September, we did do a lockdown drill with a search with the canine units, following up by October and November our standard fire drills. And then in November and December and January, we did do a lockout drill. We also did perform an evacuation drill because of a gas leak to the elementary school. And we concluded in February with a drug search and lockdown with dogs. So on top of that, we maintained our fire watch pretty much for the last six months, on and off, as it pertained to staff members logging and making sure that they were roaming the building, doing their checks every 15 minutes in 30-minute increments. So we were very much on top of our drills this year, even though we weren't in the building as much as one would have anticipated. Secondly, in the month of April, with Janine Connolly, we embedded some tornado awareness drills in the Google Classroom where students were tasked with having family home conversations with their families because we weren't in the building as to what was their tornado preparedness plan. And then they had to log it into Google Classroom as a homework assignment. So I think we fully covered this year and was very happy with the amount of opportunities that we had, both practice and real, as it pertained to all of our safety procedures.
All right, can you hear me or no?
Yes.
Okay. Sounds good. So at MES this year, the very first day, we did our fire intruder and tornado drill. And then each month, we did a fire drill, along with we did do a school safety evacuation drill, where we had to evacuate the building and actually dismiss from the high school. So that was a real life drill, sort of say. And then after we were, the school building was closed in April, the teachers did a variety of ways of doing preparedness at home for tornadoes, where some teachers sent out an explanation that was in kid-friendly terms to parents so that they would not fear tornadoes, but practice tornadoes, like where to go in their house, if they have a basement, if they have, you know, interior room, bathroom. Some teachers actually sent out posters of different, like two-story homes or single-story homes, ranch-style homes, and showing where to go and have those conversations that they could have with students. Teachers also did some YouTube links of kid-friendly, of at-home things too, so that the kids didn't fear tornadoes at home, but had those practices as well, just like we do at school. And there were a few fire drills this year where I blocked off an entrance, where the students had to figure out a different way to evacuate the building, along with a drill that we did at lunch and recess time to see how kids would react during that time if there were to be a fire, and they did a fantastic job with evacuating the building in all those situations.
So on your screen, you'll see that this is one of the KPIs that we've been sharing on a monthly basis, and we're going to continue to have this rotation on a monthly basis so that over the course of any given school year, the Board of Education in the community will always have an opportunity to see the progress we're making on all of our KPIs, our key performance indicators. So this is the month when we talk quite a bit about safety. I wanted to mention that the other thing that we would have done had we been in session is the baseline student Gallup poll for grades five through 12. But without having the proper opportunity to set up the introduction to that Gallup poll, it didn't make a lot of sense at this point in time to start a new process without being able to do context and explanation guiding the student through that. It would be an online event. So that one, we will need to postpone until next school year. So next month, we're going to be taking a look at the annual conduct summary and talk a little bit about post-secondary certifications and implementation plan.
All right. Thank you. Q12 Survey Strategies, the Admin Team.
So the Trust Action Team has been leading the way in terms of the activities. It has been really wonderful to see every Wednesday, both buildings have a series of accolades that they give to their colleagues for the good things that happened the previous week. And it's amazing to see the list. It truly seems like the list gets longer every week. The principals co-chair that committee, and do you have any follow-up on how you're closing out the year with that committee?
Well, I can go ahead and speak to the last time that the Trust Action Team met last month. It was at a time when we were just departing school, and it was a tough time for the staff, not really knowing if we would return or not. So when we talked about doing the Q12, which has been our standard towards the end of the year, they felt as though it would not be in our best interest at that time to do that. Since that time, there's been discussion. I've spoken with Dr. Oppert and a few of my colleagues at the administrative level as to whether or not it would be a good idea to go back and still put forth the Q12 before the end of the school year. Again, it was the Trust Action Team at the time that said that when we departed, it wouldn't be a good idea. But since that time, we've done a lot of great things as a district. We've done everything from engaging our paraprofessionals and our custodian, then our kitchen food staff, which, if you recall, was one of our subset groups that was not scoring very highly. On top of that, we've done some things as far as recognizing the work that we're doing as colleagues, peer-to-peer, as well as administrator-to-peer. So I think the possibility exists to at least pose the question as to whether or not it would be a good idea for us to gather this data and come back to the Trust Action Team and see what their thoughts are. We know that we are very proud of what we've done as a staff, and it might be an opportunity for us to again gather good input. It also might be a time that they would look at other questions as to whether or not there was preparedness involved, and how did we respond as administration as far as to giving technology in the hands of students or supplying teachers with the things that they needed. I'm not sure what the opinion of the board would be, or I don't speak for anyone else other than myself at this time, but it's kind of where we were. And is it something that we should be moving forward and looking at before we depart?
Yeah, and I would agree with Dan with everything that he stated. And also, at the time when we were doing the Q12 strategies, we were really focusing on the recognition piece at that time, and we weren't sure at that time how that would look or how we would continue recognizing people and encouraging people. And I think a lot of encouragement and a lot of recognition has actually taken place during this time for the shout-outs that Dr. Oppert has mentioned, along with just encouraging emails that I see on a regular basis, so.
So we certainly could make some strides forward. There might be some negative comments that would come back. Then again, it would be a touchstone with our staff to see where we are in the midst of a world pandemic. So I'm not sure if any board members have an opinion as to what they think we should do, if we should go back to the Trust Action Team and ask for their opinion and see what their thoughts are.
Bruce Schaller, I would think it'd be a good idea because, you know, teaching changed, so it'd be curious to see how everybody's reacting to the virtual teaching methods and what they think are the positives and negatives.
I certainly would defer to the administrative team, and if you feel as though, you know, returning to the Trust Action Team and asking for their opinion and getting their blessing, that would, in my opinion, be the best thing for you to do. You both certainly know your staff, and I think that the members of the team are quite representative of our staff, and they would be able to do the best direction far better than what we're looking for.
I don't believe I've seen Mr. McGregor join the meeting yet tonight. I've.
I have not either. So I think we'll defer on that topic, and we will move on to the announcements. Thank you, Mr. Wilfrid, and Mrs. Pakita for your input on the Trust Action Team. Contributions to the district. We received the following donations from Mary Varty. We had the Pieterski Memorial, $100 for the Manawha FFA. Pocaca FFA Alumni Association also gave a Pieterski Memorial, $100 for the FFA. Jennifer Urban, Morgan Ilers, again, a Pieterski Memorial, $100 for the Manawha FFA. Victor and Christie Anthony Trust, again, Pieterski Memorial, $50 for the FFA. Kenneth and Nancy Brown, same, $25 for the FFA. Patrick and Stacy Jarvis, $100 for the FFA. Greg and Judy Alvin, $20 for the FFA. Tim and Katie Schneiderwett, again, a memorial for the FFA. Abby gave $1,000 for the Urgent Needs Fund, and Dr. Oppert, $200 to the Manawha FFA. So we certainly thank all of those generous donors for their generosity this month. Would any member like any item removed from the consent agenda to be dealt with separately? We will then vote by general consent. And here you know the consent agenda carries. Are there any public comments? I'm not seeing anything in our chat box. We will then move on. Correspondents, there was a thank you card from the family of Grace Pieterski, who happens to be Mrs. Cordis's mother-in-law, for the donation that the district made to the American Cancer Society, as well as to the Little Wolf High School Sunshine Committee as well. Board recognition, there are no recognitions this month. District Administrator, through Dr. Oppert, please.
Thank you very much. Colin Mosher is our Student Health Representative of the Month, and I did see that he is on with us this evening. Colin, if you would like to, the microphone is yours.
All right, Colin Mosher. Basically, for teacher appreciation, we got a bunch of cards together and Subway gift cards, and we sent those out like as a replacement for the potluck they usually have for teacher appreciation. So we did that, and then we're probably going to have a summer planning meeting too this summer if everything like settles down and we're able to do that later. And that's pretty much it.
So in your opinion, how are you finding students adjusting to virtual online learning and all the changes you've experienced recently?
Um, most of them are doing pretty good, like they're finding hobbies and stuff that they can do at home, or like going out and fishing, or going on runs and stuff, keeping themselves healthy. So I think most people are adapting pretty well for such a big change it was.
It definitely was a dramatic change. So if you were to give us any kind of feedback in terms of what would improve the quality of your education, because in the future, they're saying, in all likelihood, there won't be snow days anymore. We'll be doing more of this sort of thing. So even a snow day when we're at home will be some kind of virtual learning experience. Is there any tip or advice you would offer from the student point of view?
I'd say one teacher that's doing really good is Jake Kaz, like the format that he's doing, where he just like, he gives a short video, maybe like 10, 15 minutes long, and then just like a little article to read and then a short assignment to do on it. Like, it's not too much work for the student, but you're still getting that key learning without all the work or like a big thing you have to do. So I think he's doing a good job at that.
Very nice. Oftentimes, that's referred to in the educational world as a flipped classroom, where the instruction is that pre-recorded little lesson. And it sounds like he's chunking it out in about the right amount of work per day that's doable for a student.
Yeah, definitely.
Thanks for giving him a shout-out. He is a first-year teacher, so I'm sure he really appreciates the positive feedback in his first year in the educational profession. Next on the list, legislative update. We had our first legislative breakfast just last week, and it was very interesting. We've never done it virtually before, so it was more of a listening session. We weren't sure how the dialogue would go, and we weren't sure how the time allotment would go, because generally, we only have between 60 and 90 minutes with the legislators. And it took about that amount of time just for them to do their virtual sharing with a few of us putting questions into the chat box. One moment while I'm getting Mr. McGregor into the meeting. So the legislators did ask, though, if we would gather some information and send it to them. As they move forward, they're going to have some very difficult decisions to make about the state budget, about educational needs. And they also need to balance the story they hear from some of their constituents, not in the educational field, with those of us working in the field. So here's what they asked us to communicate. The top five needs or priorities we have within each of our districts. So they want to hear the perspectives that differ between small, medium, and large districts, metropolitan, and rural districts. They would like to hear us describe what we believe our ideal plan will be for reopening in the fall. They also want to hear what our plan would be if there would happen to be a flare-up of COVID-19 in the fall or winter. They would like us to talk about our instructional practices and why we're teaching the way we're teaching. They identified that they're getting some of their parent constituents sometimes being harshly critical of the way education is being delivered. On the other hand, they're also getting a lot of praise from some of their districts. So they'd like to hear all of us speak to the rationale behind our approaches and perhaps some of the hindrances that are making things difficult. Here in Manawha, I think we could talk about the rural access to internet as being certainly something of a challenge unique to our community and other rural communities. And the state certainly has within their power possibly some resources to help us with that. They would like to know what our approach and plan is going to be for athletics in the fall. They would like a description of how we're addressing mental health during this pandemic and during the time that there is a school closure. They're very concerned particularly about the mental health of our youth. They'd like us to describe our summer school plans. And finally, they'd like any local data that we have on the parents' wishes or comfort level as they're returning their children to the classroom in the fall. So those are the things that came directly from the legislators, and we'll be compiling that in a CSIS6 survey so that there be some comparative analysis of the information that we're sharing. Next on the list, you have the monthly enrollment report. We are up ever so slightly this month. I don't know if there are any questions regarding that report. And seeing none. We do have the board vacancy. We've referred to this bylaw as the method by which to fill the board vacancy. It is for the Village of Augensberg and Town of St. Lawrence. So if you reside in that area, the board is interested in having you join us. And there is a process. So the process is by June 5th. If people could send a letter to me, that can be very short, it can be in an email, just indicating your interest. Then generally, the process is at the regular June meeting. That candidate or the candidates, there could be multiple individuals, would visit with the board. They call it an interview, but it's usually more of a casual conversation, just sharing why the person or people are interested in being a part of the board. just sharing why the person or people are interested in being a part of the board and talking about today's issues in public education. And I think that takes me to the end of my report. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Dr. Oppert. Since Mr. McGregor has joined us, Mr. McGregor, if you would be ever so kind as to give us our project update, please.
I can, thank you. I will, similar to last time, I'll flip through some pictures, if that's all right with everybody, as I do my presentation, to give you some current pictures of the job site. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Yep.
All right. So things are coming along really well at the high school. The rain that we had yesterday and all day today was not needed, but we're working around it. So kind of a status update as to where we are. The rain today did hold off our metal panel crew from getting more of their flashings installed. They've started with the metal panels on the administration addition that you see here in the photo to the left. They started that last week, and they're working their way through that. They'll be back on site tomorrow to keep plugging away with that. And that'll continue to take shape over the course of the next couple of weeks. And once they're done with the administration addition, they're going to jump over to the fitness center and be putting metal panels on that addition as well. As you can see, the steel is up for the new front entrance. The canopy there in the front ground and the larger atrium entrance in the background. And then, as you can see where the Manawa logo is, that was the existing entrance door. That door will be coming down, and it'll be an open entrance into the new lobby area, where you can either go straight into the high school or take a left into the middle school area. At the fitness center, today, we got our stairs on site. So the stairs are probably about 80% complete. They have a little bit more welding to do on them tomorrow. But that'll be a, that'll be a big milestone, getting those stairs in and getting them installed. As far as site work on these two additions, the grading crew, they are working on the vacant lot as well as around both of the additions. If you went around the high school at all, at the fitness center, they do have the topsoil graded and ready for erosion control mat or seeding to be installed on those slopes. And then our site concrete contractor is to be on site this week to get rolling with the stairs and sidewalks at both additions and working their way around the site as well. On the renovation, we have a really good jump on the demolition. A good picture for that one. So this is the demolition. As you can see here, right about here is where the sign turned you to go into the existing guidance office. So there is a lot of space that has been demolished already. And this picture was from Friday, and there's actually more that has taken place today. From this point, you can almost see, almost straight through to the high school office. There is not many walls left in place here where the new middle school area will be going. So they have about another week and a half, two weeks on site for their demolition. Another look kind of back at the guidance office. Some of the large openings we're creating for the sliding glass doors into the middle school classrooms. The abatement work will be getting wrapped up right around the end of this week, first part of next week, with their, getting their clean air tests and being able to get them off the site, which will be a very big step in the right direction. And at the, I don't have a picture of it, but at the tech ed area, they're getting a lot of their underground work done. The saw cutters were on site today, cutting up floors and getting ready for all the underground plumbing to take place back in that area to create the two new bathrooms back there, as well as the rough-in for the new plumbing going to the activity room and the egg shop, as well as the maintenance shop. So there's a lot of mechanical, electrical plumbing, rough-in kind of going on throughout the building. At the elementary school, it'll probably be another week or so, and we'll get demolition started there in the early childhood as well as special ed area. Not a lot of demo, but get them over there and get it wrapped up while they're on site. The big project at the elementary school right now is Air Handler Number 7, which is right outside the district office. We got the existing unit shut down last week, and the contractors got everything geared up yet today. And tomorrow, they are going to be working on removing the old unit and putting the new unit in its place. And that should be, that work is slated to take place over the course of this week and wrap up by the end of the week. So getting that new unit in place there and getting it operational. But I'll, similar to the weekly update I sent last week, we have a lot of different phases of construction going on, but everything is going very well. And the contractors are really cooperating, and I think everybody sees the light at the end of the tunnel, I guess you'd say. Any questions on schedule?
Last week, we had a question from a board member to describe the operational referendum site. So if you could tell us a little bit about, it's looking more and more ready, like grass seed might be going in there in a parking lot pretty soon. I saw a big pile of concrete and rebar going away last week.
Yes, and the surveyors were on site today, and they got the new parking lot staked out, so weather pending. FALC's will be back on site. They actually did drop off a few more pieces of equipment this evening. But weather pending, they'll be back on site and start grading that lot out with the grading they're doing at the front of the building as well. So that'll be starting to take shape over the next, course of the next couple of weeks here and getting that graded out, getting the light poles installed and cleaning that up. I know one very positive thing that I noticed today on site was how FALC's did have that graded with all the rain that we got. There was not, there was not any large areas of standing water. So that's very positive for being prepared to put topsoil on and seed that space. Does have a pretty decent dome to it, so it drains properly.
Matt?
Yeah.
The vacant lot, so the way it is right now, that is the way it's going to be. It's not going to blend into the hill, it's going to, the way that hill is going to be there.
Correct, that hill will remain there. We did not have, the intent was to create some sort of a practice field or some sort of play area over on that site. And if we would have piled more fill up towards the south side of that site, it would have made kind of more of a larger hill. So we took as, all the fill that we had from the excavation of the new building and what was left over from the vacant elementary school, as far as fill, graded it all out and created a nice, flat play area at the bottom side of that hill.
Okay. Yeah, because it looks pretty nice. Like you said, the water's not puddling up there, it looks real nice right now.
Yep. Just need to get some grass to grow on it.
See how much oats, and that'll grow fast.
Yes. Any other questions? As far as budget, to date, we have used just, or excuse me, just shy of $400,000 in contingencies and allowances. Some of it has been items that we had projected back on bid day. Some of it was some unforeseen items that we pulled out of contingencies. So right now, we are right around $950,000 remaining in contingencies and allowances. And that does still leave about $34,000, $35,000 in unawarded fund as well. So where we are with demolition right now, we're pretty comfortable as far as where we're at. And we have not hit any large expenses to date. We have run across a couple more unexpected items that we have in the pending column, but nothing, nothing a budget breaker. Any questions on budget or schedule?
We may have to plan in the next month or so for another mini-board tour through these new areas. The pictures are phenomenal, but there's nothing quite like standing in those new spaces just to get a feel for it.
Yes, because I know you, look at a picture like this in the fitness center. It looks small in a picture, but it's actually rather large and expansive once you're standing in there. There's quite a bit of space in there, and I think it's going to be a great space for the district as well as the community. But yes, I agree with you, Dr. Oppert. A tour would be fantastic.
Thank you. I'll let you know if, who's interested, and maybe we can pair it up with one of our committee or regular board meetings.
Yeah, or even if we had to break it into a couple smaller tours, depending on count or anybody's concern with going over that 10 count that is currently, everybody's still following, or most people are still following. We can definitely make something work.
Sounds good, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for joining us tonight, Matt.
And thanks again for being flexible with my scheduling.
Absolutely, we appreciate you. All right, on to school operations reports. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Wilkram or Mrs. Piquita regarding the report? Any comments from either of you?
No comments at this time.
Thank you. Business-related reports, does anyone have any questions for Mrs. O'Brien regarding her report?
I'm going to stop sharing so that she can share with you a brief presentation. A fund balance has become a concern across the state. There's a misunderstanding among some that there are huge amounts of savings that school districts are experiencing because of the school building closures. And we all know that's not a reality, because at the last finance committee meeting, Mrs. O'Brien described for us the many bills that are ongoing, whether we're in a virtual format or within the buildings. But because of that, some people felt that we had fund balances that were becoming huge dollar figures, and that perhaps the state could recapture some of that fund balance to help to balance the state budget. So we felt that it was very important that the fund balance, which is something that not everybody understands very well, we should explain it, and we should make sure that people are comfortable with what a fund balance is and why it's necessary. So Mrs. O'Brien was kind enough to put together this presentation for us this evening. Is your microphone on, Mrs. O'Brien?
How about now?
Now it is, thank you.
Okay, every time I tried to click on the microphone, it kept going away. So I did the Ctrl-D option. Can you see my screen? Not yet.
Yes.
Yeah.
So can you see my fund balance screen? That's what you're looking at?
Yep.
Yes, you could put it in present mode now.
I did, but I'm, the struggle today, the struggle. Here we go. How about that?
Perfect.
Okay, so fund balance, yes, thank you for that nice intro. Gave me a little bit of time here, but the fund balance, it is not a fun balance, it is a funded balance. And so the fund balance is, a lot of people consider it to be a, almost like a savings account, and that is absolutely not what a fund balance is. So let's talk a little bit about that. Our fund balance is equal to our total assets. So it's total of what we have, of what we own, minus our total liabilities. And your liabilities are what you owe. So it's what you own minus what you owe. And it isn't just cash, where a lot of our legislators kind of think of it as, well, isn't this your savings account? Or isn't this what you just have in the bank? And it is absolutely not that at all. So let's talk about what our assets are. Assets come in a couple different forms. Actually, there's five different kinds of assets according to the GASB 54 language. But the easiest way to describe our assets are by what is designated and what is undesignedated. Designated assets are, let's say, let's talk about cash. They might be cash that you can only spend on something in particular. So an asset might be carryover balances from our Title I or our Title II or from our flow-through budgets that come from the federal government. And it's money that the federal government is going to give to us, but we can only spend it on, you know, very specific things. In the case of Title I, it would be on reading or math education at the elementary school. And Title II, it would only be on professional development. Title III would, or not Title III, excuse me, the flow-through is only for special education. So those are designated funds or designated assets. We do have, you know, we have cash in the bank. We have our, you know, amount of our balance in our checking account and our savings accounts. And some of that is undesignedated, which means that it's not for anything in particular. It's just to pay the bills, to do payroll, to do that, you know, sort of thing too. So we have, you know, there's both types of assets that we have. Petty cash, we have, you know, there's always a little bit of money at each of the offices that we use for purchasing perhaps. Oh, if you have to run down to the post office to send something out. You know, you take money from petty cash, and then it gets reimbursed. So there's always, you know, a little bit of money on hand in the offices. One of the largest assets that gets reported in June is our taxes receivable. So property taxes. We get payments of our taxes. Our fiscal year starts July 1 and goes through June 30. When people pay their taxes, though, we, they can pay in January or they can pay in February, and then there's also a payment that we receive in August. So all of those different payments, they come at different times. The payment that we receive in August is actually for, the payment that we'll receive in August of 2020 is actually for our 2019-2020 school year. So we get it in August, but our fiscal year is actually ended in June. So that money is out there at the end of June, and it's money owed to us, and so it's considered an asset. The other assets there are kind of listed, and you can see, you know, what we're talking about. If you have any, you know, questions, just pop in and tell me to, you know, ask a question. Moving on to liabilities, then. Our liabilities are the things that we owe. So in the summer, our biggest, you know, liabilities that we have are what we call our payroll payables. And our teachers, their first paycheck comes on August 31st for a particular school year. So for the 1920 school year, they got a paycheck on August 31st. Their last paycheck, then, if they elected to have 24 payrolls or 24 paychecks, would be on August 15th of 2020. Well, our fiscal year for the 2019-2020 school year again ended on June 30th. So we have four payrolls that we have to put into payables, into a liability account. We owe that to the teachers, but those individuals, they wanted their paycheck broken out into 24 equal pays, which makes it easier for their, you know, personal budgeting or for whatever. which makes it easier for their, you know, personal budgeting or for whatever reason. If we owe any money to governments, a lot of times with our audits, you'll find things like, oh, you have to, you know, move money around, they go into a liability, and so they're reported as a liability at the end of the year, even though the money gets moved in the following year. So this here is, my friend Pete from Forecast 5 helped me develop this. A little graph on what our fund balance looks like throughout the year. So the blue is our current year, and it is current up through March, so that's the last thing. And it's projected then through the rest of April, May, and June. Our previous year, so prior year, last year, is in the dashed red line there. And so your fund balance goes up and down all year long, dependent upon whether you are taking in more money or spending more money in that month. You can see in the prior year, so that would be 2018, 2019, our, you know, month-end balance dropped into the negative, negative $535,000. That was, you know, we had to borrow that year. This past year, so in 2019-2020, our fund balance stayed positive. So we did not have to borrow for this school year. So you can just kind of see the difference of that. And how, you know, that is what actual fund balance is. It's just, you know, how much, how much your, you know, if your cash dips into the negative numbers, we need to short-term borrow, and that ends up costing our taxpayers money. According to board policy, then, as it is, you know, as it goes with fund balance, I kind of bolded the most important parts there. "The fund-10 balance shall be maintained at a level sufficient to minimize or avoid short-term borrowing for cash flow purposes." And then the second paragraph there, it says, "Fund-10 balance shall not fall below 18% of the preceding year's fund-10 expenditures." So this is the board policy that is set by you, the Manawa School Board. There is no, oh, what's my word, no law or no even recommendation from DPI as to what your fund balance has to be. It's just supposed to be healthy, and so nobody really defines what is healthy, what is a health fund, healthy fund balance. But according to our Board of Education, this is what you're deeming as a healthy fund balance.
Would you say, Mrs. O'Brien, that even at an 18% fund balance, that in a year where you have that as your year-end balance, that that would be a year when you may still have to do some cash flow borrowing in the month of November? So it sounds, if someone were to hear 18% of your assets are in the fund balance, they might think that sounds like a lot of money. We actually find that in years that we don't have to borrow, we need to be somewhere in the neighborhood of 22% or 23% at least?
That is what history has shown us here. So as we're looking at this slide, the only fund balance that is actually, you know, reported, or the only one that we ever really hear about it, is at the end of the fiscal year. So at June 30, you know, it tells you what your fund balance was. So this year, June 30, our fund balance was at $2,020,000, $20,797, which happens to be 22% of last year's expenditures. So that was the magic number that we needed to get through without borrowing for this school year. But what I want everybody to realize is that over a million dollars of that was taxes owed to us. It was, you know, it wasn't money on hand, it was an asset that was due to us. So we knew we were going to get that money, so it's, we can count it on our accounting books as money, but we didn't really have it. So that's important to realize. This year, just to show you a little bit of what's going on this year, our fund balance is tracking to be around 2.2 million. But again, when I go back and I look at, okay, what do the, whoopsie, what do the municipalities owe us? They're still, you know, the old tax money will be over a million dollars. So you can say, you know, whatever your reported fund balance is on June 30, roughly half of that is not money that is, you know, had, it's money that's owed. And just also, you know, in 2019-20, that was the first time that we had a fund balance high enough so that we didn't need to short-term borrow for this school year. In as long as I can remember, and I really haven't been paying attention for this for that long, but at least in the last five years, I believe, we have always had to short-term borrow. So why keep a healthy fund balance? Well, the main one is to avoid excessive short-term borrowing. Why have our taxpayers pay interest on anything? We should, you know, live within our means and make sure that we are not having to borrow, if at all possible. The other reason to keep a good fund balance is to cover unforeseen expenditures. So if something were to happen, if we have a healthy fund balance, we're able to weather the storm a little bit better. So for example, which I think is a really good example, is this upcoming school year. We are really not sure what the state is going to do with funding. We thought we were going to know, and then, you know, we've just really thrown a monkey wrench in the whole system. And because we have a healthy fund balance, I'm able to say, you know, whatever the state throws at us, we're going to be able to handle it because we do have, you know, some money. Will our fund balance go down if, you know, if that were to happen? I mean, if we had, you know, some very dire circumstances, we'd certainly try to balance our budget and make sure that we wouldn't have to dip into fund balance. But there's always that chance that you may have to, and you could. So let's say that we're still at 22, maybe 25% of expenditures for this year. There's a little bit of room, you know, so that we don't go down below that 18%. One of our, a district that is in the CISA 6 area, their business manager at one of our last meetings, she was saying their fund balance is at 8%. Well, if you have an 8% fund balance, that does not give you a lot of wiggle room for, you know, if something were to happen. So I'm very pleased with where we're sitting financially. I think we're very healthy with our fund balance. The last reason to keep that healthy fund balance is to demonstrate financial stability. That is one of the reasons that we were able to receive an A-plus rating for our borrowing. And that's always a good thing to, you know, show our taxpayers, but then also it makes us a financially stable entity. Oops, move forward here. Is that it? I guess so. I just wanted to keep on talking. So if you have any questions about that, you know, make sure that you let me know. The biggest takeaway from this is to understand that, you know, we don't have an extra $2 million sitting around that we can, that we spend on, or that is even available for spending. That is what we use to pay our bills, and we hope to keep everything, you know, in the positive for this upcoming year as well. So I can stop sharing. Hold on here. There we go.
Does anyone have any questions for Mrs. O'Brien? Thank you very much, Mrs. O'Brien, for that lovely presentation.
Oh, you're so welcome. Thank you.
Directors' reports. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Cobberubius or Ms. Brower regarding the reports? Do either of you have any comments? Thank you. Board comments. Do any board members have any comments to share? Now, we'll move on to committee reports. Does anyone have any questions for any of our committee chairs? Or do any of our committee chairs have any comments to share? We shall move on to unfinished business. Item A, School Perception Survey. Next steps. Dr. Appert.
Just wanted to talk with you briefly about the survey itself. It was predominantly a parent engagement survey, and demonstrated areas that they felt our district excelled, and areas where we could strengthen our building programs. So the next step for them would be building principals taking the survey results specific to their buildings and taking that back to their building leadership teams to review. I would think realistically, the next opportunity to do that would be in the fall. But we do hope to have that kind of survey information available again each year. The other thing that I felt that I should be doing between now and the October annual meeting would be to meet with Chief Gorman and city officials and begin to put together more specific details about the School Resource Officer Program, what would be the board policies and guidelines from NEOLA, what would a memorandum of understanding look like. That way, as members of the public are coming to that annual meeting, they'll have a more clear perception of what they are voting for, full-time, part-time. What would this person do? What are the details of the job description? I think in that way, it would be completely transparent and much easier for the voting public to make their final decision based on the recommendation, the indications, or they want to move forward. But I did want to ask if you had any guidance or further suggestions for me on either one of those, either building principals, working with building leadership team, or for me to move forward, working with city officials and Chief Gorman.
I just have a question. Would it be possible for you to share the results of that survey with the board directly? The only opportunity that we did have to see those results were when Mr. Foster presented them at the last board meeting, and I think it would be helpful for all of us to have a copy of that if possible.
Absolutely. In fact, it would probably be a wise idea to put it on the board website because that was an integral part of that particular meeting.
I would agree as well. Thank you.
You bet. I would be happy to do so.
Anyone else have any feedback or questions, concerns, direction?
I will involve our legal counsel also. I forgot to mention that. But with any memorandum of understanding or anything of that nature, we would always get legal counsel involved as well.
Okay, if we're good there, we will then move on to new business. Item A, Consider Naming of the Official District Paper.
So I move the Manawa Board of Education name the Apaka County Post as the official district newspaper.
I have a motion by Mrs. Petke. Do I have a second?
Second. Bruce Scheller.
A second by Mr. Scheller. Any discussion? Hearing none, we will proceed by a roll-call vote. Mr. Holman?
Aye.
Mr. Forbes?
Aye.
Mrs. Petke?
Aye.
Mr. Scheller?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
And an aye for Mrs. Johnson. Motion carries by a roll-call vote. Item B, Approved Naming of Legal Depositories.
Bruce Scheller, I move that the Manawa Board of Education name First State Bank, Premier Community Bank, BMO, American Depositories Management, and Associated Bank Green Bay as legal depositories for the School District of Manawa as presented.
I have a motion by Mr. Scheller. Do I have a second?
I'll second that. Russ Johnson.
Okay, I have a second by Mr. Johnson. Any discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Holman?
Aye.
Mr. Forbes?
Aye.
Mrs. Petke?
Aye.
Mr. Scheller?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
And an aye for Mrs. Johnson as well. Motion carries by roll-call vote. Item C, Consider Approval of the Purchase of a Replacement Generator.
I move that the Manawa Board of Education approve, or consider approval of the purchase of the replacement generator from Master Electric as presented.
And that was Mr. Forbes for that motion?
I'm sorry.
And do I have a second?
Mr. Holman with a second.
A second by Mr. Holman. Any discussion? Hearing none, again by roll-call vote. Mr. Holman?
Aye.
Mr. Forbes?
Aye.
Mrs. Petke?
Aye.
Mr. Scheller?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
And an aye for Mrs. Johnson as well. Roll-call vote carries. Item E, excuse me, item D, First Reading of Previously Tabled Policy Updates, Volume 29, Number 1, for Policies 2370, 3122.01, 4122.01, 7540, 7540.02, 7540.04, and 7544. Are there any questions or comments on the first reading of the NEOLA policies being considered for approval at the regular June Board of Education meeting? Okay, hearing nothing, that will then be up at our next monthly meeting. Item E, First Reading of Fitness Center Guidelines as Presented. So because this is a first reading, we don't actually need a motion where there be any questions or comments on the first reading of the Fitness Center guidelines.
Guidelines only get one month.
Correct. And that's why I'm confused.
Sorry, I apologize. You know, you can certainly take your time, because as we saw this evening, it isn't ready to open just yet. But we want it to be ahead of the game so that when we're ready to open, we have everything in place.
So we'd actually, because it is a guideline, then be looking for a motion to approve them as presented, or a motion to table.
Bruce Scheller, I move that the Manawa Board of Education approve the Fitness Center Guidelines as presented.
I have a motion by Mr. Scheller. Do I have a second?
Stand for a second.
Second by Mr. Forbes. Any discussion? Hearing none, we will then move forward by a roll-call vote. Mr. Holman?
Aye.
Mr. Forbes?
Aye.
Mrs. Petke?
Aye.
Mr. Scheller?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
And an aye for Mrs. Johnson as well. Motion carries on a roll-call vote. Item F, Consider Approval of One-Year Waiver of AG 5421A.
Stand for, I move that the Manawa Board of Education consider approval of one-year waiver of AG 5421A, grading for 4K, grading process as presented.
I have a motion by Mr. Forbes. Do I have a second?
I'll second that. Russ Johnson.
Okay, that's a second by Mr. Johnson. Any discussion? Just for the sake of clarity, this is for the 2019-2020 school year. We will proceed by a roll-call vote. Mr. Holman?
Aye.
Mr. Forbes?
Aye.
Mrs. Petke?
Aye.
Mr. Scheller?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
And Mrs. Johnson has an aye as well. Motion carries by a roll call vote. Next meeting date, all meetings are going to be held virtually. June 2nd is the Ad Hoc Recognition Committee at 4:30. June 3rd is Curriculum Committee at 4 o'clock. June 3rd is Policy and Human Resources at 5 o'clock. June 8th is Finance at 5:30. June 10th is Buildings and Browns at 5:30. June 15th is a regular board meeting at 7 o'clock. And July 8th is Buildings and Browns. And all of those meetings will be held virtually. I am looking for a motion to adjourn, please.
I move that the Manawa-
Bruce Scheller?
Education adjourn.
I'm sorry, Mrs. Petke. I have a motion by Mrs. Petke. Do I have a second?
Second by Mr. Scheller.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. We will go ahead and proceed by roll call vote. Mr. Holman? Mr. Forbes?
Aye.
Mrs. Petke?
Aye.
Mr. Scheller?
Aye.
Mrs. Johnson? And it is an aye from Mrs. Johnson as well. Motion carries at 8:00 HPM. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.